Good evening, everybody. I want to call the December 3rd, 2012 meeting to order. First, we'll be having weekly public discussion if anybody has anything. And then we'll be meeting with the Board of Assessors relative to the tax burden to be borne on each class of property. Animal Control Officer at 6:15, we have a consent agenda. We'll be looking at the alcohol licenses as well as discuss the pre-Town animal shelter contract with Lakeville Board of Selectmen. We'll review minutes. We'll look at the town administrator's department head meeting and budget timeline. We'll be looking at announcing some legislation that just went through. And I'll actually have you do that. Do you want to announce that? The legislation that went through? I'll board it for you. Did you read it?
I haven't seen it.
You haven't?
No. The truth of the matter is, it's printed so small that she can't read it. She sticks me in the throat.
Do you want to read it?
After.
Okay. And that's just about it. We have some changes statuses that we'll be doing. And we'll be looking at possible retention of a town planner. And that's about it. So if anybody has anything for the Board for public discussion? Yay, okay. Then we will talk to the Board of Assessors about the tax rate. And the tax rate.
Here's your official packet.
Got it. Turn it over.
That's a little more expansive than the one that I sent you in your memo packet. Because that is what is on the Town website.
Okay.
I believe I also had Jackie Brown provide to Elsie your username and password for the gateway. So when they are finished this evening, after I make the changes, you can go in and electronically sign the sheet.
Okay. All you.
Thank you for inviting us tonight. We're here to make a presentation to the Selectmen in determining the minimum residential factor for fiscal 13. You should have three articles, four pages. One of them is classification hearing. It's got a chart. You also should have a historic shift in resulting tax rates form. And the what-if shift scenario. Fiscal 12 was a certification year. Fiscal 13 is an interim year. Each year by state law, all cities and towns within the state of Massachusetts must do interim adjustments. Fiscal 13 values are calculated from the analysis of sales that occurred in calendar year 2011. Values are developed by performing analysis of the sales by classification, style, neighborhood, et cetera. The Department of Revenue then analyzes and certifies the values. The fiscal 2013 levy increased by 3.4 percent. Values decreased by 2 percent. Residential values decreased by 2.3 percent. And commercial and industrial values decreased approximately 0.2 percent. The fiscal 2013 new growth figure is $160,302. Of that, $93,305 is from the residential class, $24,539 from the commercial and industrial classes, and $42,458 is from the personal property class.
Have you read it? What should we be reading?
Just my own presentations.
Oh, okay. Because I'm trying to see it. I can't say. Say, where is this stuff?
For the last nine years, the Town of Preetown has chosen a shift of 1.45. Based on a shift of 1.45, the excess levy capacity would be approximately $13,760.
Can you say that number?
So I'm going to move on to the tax classification hearing. Just this spreadsheet that I gave you. And that basically, it just shows your property, average single value, average single family assessed value in fiscal 12 was $278,867. In fiscal 13, the average single family assessed value is $272,133. With a shift of 1.45, the tax rate would be $12.76 per thousand. The average single-family tax bill would be $3,472, which would be an increase of $93 for average single family. For the average two-family assessed value in fiscal 12 was $282,101. The average two-family assessed value in fiscal 13 is $269,697. And that amounts to an increased tax bill for average two-family of $22. Now, if you look at the average commercial assessed value in fiscal 12, that was $543,800. And the average commercial assessed value in fiscal 13 is $542,337. With a shift of 1.45, the tax rate for commercial, industrial, and personal property would be $20.57 per thousand. That would amount to an increase of $551.77 for the average commercial. And if you look just down a little bit further, I put one more on there because I felt it was important. If you use, if we look at an example of a commercial property that was assessed for fiscal 12 at $270,000, and then we make the adjustment for the change in commercial for fiscal 13, you end up with $269,190. In that particular case, the increase from fiscal 12 tax bill is $272.24 using that Do you have any questions on this sheet?
No.
But these figures are based on the fiscal 13 budget and we're operating on that.
Well, these are actually based on, yes, they're based on the levy and the tax rate. So, yes.
This has, doesn't, the two-and-a-half percent increase that is applied each year is not figured into it?
It is. It is.
It's already figured in for next year?
Yes.
What is the calculation?
Fiscal year 14.
No, well, no. This is for fiscal 13. This is for fiscal 13. So you've got your levy, your two-and-a-half percent, and the new growth. And then that's how the levy is calculated.
Okay. So this is a two-and-a-half percent increase already built into the taxes?
Correct. Into the, yes, to the levy.
We do that as an automatic thing?
Yes.
You know, the state does it for us and tells us what we're allowed to go up to.
Right. But it's up to the town whether they want to go that high. Two-and-a-half percent increase, correct?
That's true.
But once we set these rates, we cannot make any adjustments. In other words, if for some reason we decide that we didn't want to go two-and-a-half percent, we wanted to go 2 percent.
You can't go, no, you can't change it. Once you set the rate.
Once you set the rate.
So when we set the rate tonight, we're telling the taxpayer that you're going to have a full two-and-a-half percent increase based on, from two-and-a-half.
Next. Most of them need $13,000 under a levy limit.
And that's why we need to. And can you explain a little bit about why the Town does the 1.45 slide?
I really cannot explain why they do it because I have not been on the Board to present. I mean, it's a choice. It's a choice.
When from two-and-a-half passed, that was the first time that we could shift the tax burden between residential and commercial. And most communities actually, a lot of communities did, as soon as they were allowed to shift an additional burden onto the commercial class of the property, they did, lessening the burden on the residential. We have settled, it seems that the Town has settled in on 1.45. We used to be a community that could go up to 1.75. And then as our values changed, we kept coming down. We had to come down to now where only a community can only raise our commercial rate 50 percent over its true place. And the Selectmen have felt that they would add that burden to the commercial a little bit and give the residential folks a break because there's less chance for a residential homeowner to find additional funds where, in the old days maybe, at least the commercial could increase production, raise their prices to find extra tax revenue.
And if the Board were to say, okay, we want to lower the residential rate, then in essence, we would have to raise the commercial rate, correct?
Right.
You'd be increasing the shift.
Right, yes.
And in an era where, or in a Town, in during an era where we want to increase our commercial base, in my eyes, right now is not the time to be increasing our commercial rate.
A lot of communities feel that way, yes.
And you could only go up to, the Board could only choose a 1.5. So you're at a 1.45 now.
Right.
So you can't go much higher.
On that old chart, you'll see about 10, 12 years ago, they did try to, you know, boost it like 1 percent or 2 percent. And then they came back to the 1.45.
The only way to really hold down the amounts without changing the shift would be to lessen the two-and-a-half percent increase.
The shift would still be the same. The shift would still be the same. You would lessen the tax burden on everyone if you did not raise your two-and-a-half percent.
Lower on everyone, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
That's the only way we can hold down taxes. But then, of course, we have to spend less money.
Correct. The budget has to be less. And I'm all for doing that. We didn't have bridges that still have to be paid, law judgments that still have to be paid, things like that. I mean, if we had everything we wanted to, and, you know, we're doing a really good job, I think, of getting there, but we still have all these outstanding debts. And until we get to a place where we don't have any outstanding debt, it's really hard to justify coming down. Even though I would love to, you know, money makes the world go round, but the other part of that is it also enables our Town to do what it needs to do.
Well, there are other ways to do that, but you've already passed the Town meeting point, so you can't do it now.
Right.
But you could use your free cash, your existing free cash to lower a tax rate in subsequent years. It has to go before the Town meeting to be a vote.
Do you have any other questions? Are you ready?
I would make the motion that we, the tax rate based on current shift of 1.45 percent.
And I will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Customarily, I ask you to find 1.45 on that chart. Circle it and initial it.
And initial it.
Please.
Leave a credit card case.
Leave it. I can add majority though.
It's hard for me not to find it. No, she's already, she's already got it circled for me.
They're cute.
Well, I'm going to follow up this one on the website.
It's me tomorrow, about 10:30 yourself, and I will, I'll be white, straight through it. Jackie gave you your username and password so that you have it. I, actually, I punched it in so that I could know what it was going to be. So it's really all ready to go. I just need to probably hit one more electronic button in there. And our recap is ready to be delivered to the DOR tomorrow.
And our tax bills are ready to go out?
They will be as soon as we're, as soon as we're certified, we are in excellent condition.
Because I don't want you guys working on 12/24.
As long as I don't go home on Christmas Eve anymore with the bad attacks.
I just don't want you to do that. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
6:15. Lisa, come on up. Let's just, I just want to show you something. Pretty much, I need to, I'm not quite sure what you're looking for. I'm not either. I don't, I didn't know. Well, we knew that you were coming in because Jean had told us that she wanted you to come in, but unfortunately, she's not here. So why don't you just bring us up to speed about what you've been working on, how things are going, things like that.
Okay. What you have is a copy of what dogs have been picked up, what happened to them, if they've been nice returns but owner adopted out. So far since February, I've picked up 29. Excuse me. Trying to keep track. Most of them, we were able to return to the owner. Doing a lot of kind of PR work with the licensing, hoping to get people, to get their dogs licensed so that they're able to be found. That being said, I have sent out 72 unlicensed dog non-criminal complaints. They have been sent to the court, just waiting to, to the court where we've got to sign off on them. You know, they'll have to pay the fine. Some people have come in since then and paid any license so they don't have to go through the court system. We sent out 43 State Department letters. I've received back and done 11 of them. I do have appointments all week. I do work my own job Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, so Wednesday. Actually, Wednesday, I went to a training that I found, a free training. Thursday and Friday, I have appointments all week.
Okay.
To do more of those. I haven't received my barn book. There was an issue until the beginning of December. The issue wasn't with us, it was with the State. They had Jared actually listed every home unit sector. So we've got three books.
Oh, okay.
Between talking back and fully figuring that out and obviously, I got it from him.
What is a barn book?
It's, it's a, yeah, it's a.
Does it tell you how to do the inspection, or is it something that lists all the places that have to be inspected?
No, it gives you a list. You fill out the people's names, whether they're a dealer, how many, they want to count of how many animals they have, whether it be horses, cattle, lambs, chickens, ducks.
Oh, so this is like a log report?
Exactly. Yeah. And you have to check, make sure that they look like they're free from any kind of diseases, you know, that they're at, that they're food, water, shelter, you know, being taken care of. And that gets sent in, has to be sent back to the State by January 1st. If you don't, that was one of the questions when I had called to find out where my barn records had been turned in last year. Last year, I didn't really have anything to do with it. So we had turned it in, but it was a kind of a mix-up of who was supposed to get the books.
Okay.
So I'm in the process of doing those. I have two cruelty investigations. One is ongoing, one is brand new that just came to me last week. I've been in contact with the NSPCA. We're actually going to probably just ask them to surrender a dog that was in a very horrible condition. An investigation has been, so, for some guidance, I called the NSPCA, Chris Sharpe. I spoke with him today, finally, and I think I've got to come to that conclusion. If we don't get him to surrender, which I think he's going to be agreeable to, you know, it's something that we would have to take him to court. It's a felony charge now, a lot of it has been changed. $2,500 fine, up to five years of jail, and it's a felony on the record. This person that has this stuff has a lot of legal issues already. So between the NSPCA and this, I think we could best send right now to the dog rather than have it sitting in a shelter rest day board where I can find it home, is to get it just whatever, if we can, if we can serve the dog. He's got a lot of other issues, but he's going to be in trouble there. So the other one happens to be.
Maybe we want to talk a little bit about it.
Oh, sorry.
Or not.
I know, however, it is cruelty issue, it's not even fun. The other one is ongoing from, it started before me. That's actually almost completely resolved. Dogs are gone. We got one horse that we're working on finding a home for, and things are going well. Pretty much, thanks for coming. Okay. I want to thank you for allowing me to keep the truck. It's made a huge difference in response times. And that was my, my quick thing.
That was an okay, really.
Yeah. And like I had talked to you, I haven't talked to you, but Mr. Brown and Mr. Sade, you know, the only other thing I have is the firearms issue, which we talked about on the phone. So I'm not quite sure where that is and where it's going. Not even necessarily, I was reading through some information and not necessarily even a firearm, even a pepper spray, something, some kind of defense mechanism for myself to be safe.
Can you just, you have spoken to them, but I don't know.
I've had a couple of instances where I've been in danger. One instance that sticks out was a coyote in broad daylight attacking a cat in somebody's backyard. Very bold, continued to try and come back to get that cat. Was not necessarily afraid. Well, I went on the call, and I have no defense. If that coyote had gotten that cat, anyone and me, I have no way to defend it. I mean, I have that rabies pole, but I don't have any other defense. So at the time, one of the officers was on another call. He did end up coming. He came with his rifle. We looked at that point, the coyote had taken off in the woods. But before, prior to that, if something had happened, I probably wouldn't have been there. So my question was part of, when I was hired, and it was in the job description, I was just required to get a license to carry. So we could kind of talk to Mr. Brown about it, liability issues, things like that. So I just don't know. Like I said, I even nabbed it and gave it pepper spray, something, so that I have some form of, and I do have a Class A license. I have a license to carry and.
Yeah, I did talk to our insurance carrier about this, and they basically, to summarize it, said that there's no liability protection under our insurance policy. If the animal control officer were a member of the Preetown Police Department and was trained and certified to their standards, you have a better case for making the argument about liability protection. But being structured the way it is now, there really isn't, well, there is no liability protection. The, and I don't know what was put in the application to begin with, but generally, unless you are in fact carrying a weapon, license to carry requirements in an application, is an easy way for an employer to do a background check. Because if you go through the LTC process by the State Police, that means they've done the background investigation that the employer wouldn't have to. So while it's in the employment requirements, it's really there more for our convenience. I've done some surveys of the area towns. There are a few that allow their animal control folks to carry. When I said, what do you do about liability protection? The response was, we'll get back to you. That's not really being considered. That being said, I don't have a problem with authorizing the use of pepper spray. Pepper spray is designed as a defensive mechanism rather than offensive weapons mechanism. In the event, for whatever reason, it might be used improperly, it gets into the air and goes in a direction it shouldn't, you can recover from the damage as a result of pepper spray where using a firearm, the results are a little bit more final.
I agree with that.
All right.
I would have no issue with the law for a carry.
Yeah, I have no issue with that. Well, you, hold your motion to do that and then review it in, you know, in six months to find out how that's working for you.
Yeah, we probably will still have a liability issue with that, but I feel much better as a Town assuming that liability on our own, knowing that we might have an argument with the carrier.
And I would hope that not, I would hope that if you initially had a call, that you become priority for police response. Sure.
Well, and I have. I mean, I have not, they've been very good about me constantly. Even if I have to go somewhere that I'm not too sure about on my own.
They go with you, right?
They come with me. I've not. Just this particular instance happens to stand out, and at that point in time, I did not have any. So like I said, I've been doing my own checking as well, and I'm fine with a pepper spray.
I would make the motion that we allow police to carry pepper spray in that she comes back to, well, you keep in contact with Richard, and if that doesn't work out, then we'll take another look at this. I think that's, is that reasonable to you?
That's certainly, yeah.
I'd make that motion.
I'll make that motion, just Lisa, the animal control officer to carry pepper spray.
Oh, God, this Lisa. You know, it's a good thing she doesn't have the pepper spray. I'd be getting sprayed.
I know, we're both Lisa peas. The only other two things I have.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The only other two things I have was, you had asked me to look over the contract between the, the shelter between Lakeville and here. I have no issues really with Lakeville at all. David works very well with me. He's been very helpful if I have any questions, things like that. The only thing I do need to change, and they're aware of it, is the new laws that went into effect November 1st. The quarantine is now seven days, not 10 days.
Okay.
Which actually works in our favor because it's less money to board the dogs there. And I spoke with Tracy at the Lakeville Town Hall, and she just wanted to revise that. She just basically needed from us that we were going to renew the contract.
Okay.
So they'll be sending, their meeting is 17th, I believe. So they'll sign off on it with the revision and then with the upset to sign off on that.
Motion that we lock the contract with Lakeville with the appropriate changes that happen to be made cause with the law, and that we sign it, we sign it as soon as they finalize it.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
My only other issue is with those new laws, there's 24 pages of amendments to the state kind of animal laws. Pretty much our bylaws go in coordination with those. The only other issue is they're requiring that your animal control officers are certified within one year or higher. So that's going to be something that we'll need to. ACOM has a new class that starts, I believe, in March. I'm waiting to get that information. That's the.
When you get it, just let me know.
Mass thing, so.
And just make sure when you do the budget, they can have that in your budget.
Of course.
Right. And then, I think obviously.
Thank you so much.
You know, like we said, and it's not enough hours in a day.
Right. For anything.
I have to say that you've done a great job. I haven't heard any complaints at all.
I, I do, I do. I'm meeting a lot of people. It's education, talking to people. I plan on going to the rabies clinic and making, being a presence. I'm just kind of, I am not talking to you every question, so. I have that cell phone, they call me, and they call me at all hours, day and night. Sometimes, you know, just a question, other times, there's a widget in the problem, but most times, I feel it's one.
Is that number online on our Town website?
If it's not, it will be.
Okay, thank you. Because I don't think it is.
Because if they don't get Lisa, they get me.
Yeah.
Just kind of as an FYI too, I just wanted to show you, these are the calls that came since February. All of these are calls that have come through the police station regarding animal control. So just to kind of give you an idea, and this is in, I have a message book at the office and I have a message book at my house for any of the calls and stuff that come through. So I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of, this is by month, this.
But not all calls go through the police department?
No, these are only the ones that are printed out that have gone through the police department. So, you know, for the last six months, it's a lot.
We spoke, mentioned something about the shop.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. I have not, no.
Why don't you talk?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was approached by a woman here in town who works with a rescue group. Right now, they're, once a month or once every six weeks, they do a big adoption day and they bring their dogs in and they use their shelter and we are in Rhode Island right now. And I've actually been there, seen how the process works. She expressed an interest in possibly renting our shelter. It's only for like five hours on a Saturday, once a month, once every six weeks. No dogs stay at the shelter. Everything that comes in either has a home, an adopted home or a foster home, they all go. But if they need kind of a base area to, they get the dogs in, the people that are adopting come in, do the paperwork, that type of thing, any questions. I have, don't have particulars, but something that this approach makes me be kind of willing to, to, something to think about. So, it's something, you know, that's revenue, the shelter's there doing nothing right now.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Yeah, let's get a lease.
It gets a name recognition for the town as well.
Right, yeah. And it's, it's a pretty big group, pretty.
It says a partner, isn't it?
No, no.
Listen, you still use the office, that's the transfer station.
Oh, yeah.
Does anybody, you have any issues with, I mean, if anything that's out of whack, let us know.
Okay.
So, we can make sure.
Thank you. All right. Annual renewal of liquor licenses and other licenses issued by the Board of Selectment. LC, these are all set, right? Where is all the paperwork, I need that. No issues?
Taxes and everything.
Taxes are all set.
LC checked all that.
All right, so.
There is one, I don't think it has to do with the ones that we're going to talk about, but there are some people that do not have, have not updated their business certificate.
Right, I saw that. That's in the back of our package, so.
Right, and if it pertains to any of the licenses, one of the thoughts was that maybe we should, when they, we should hold the license, when they come in to get signed license, they have to renew their business.
All right. Do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I make a motion, we can do this individually, right?
No, you can make all one, cause there's no, if there's an issue, if there's an issue from anybody out there, just say hold and we'll hold on it, but if not, then we can do that.
It's consent agenda, you can do it all.
Yeah.
All right, so, make a motion to renew the license, liquor license for Assonet, Assonet Inn. The alcohol package store Assonet Star Market, K and E Liquors Incorporated, New York Farms, Veterans Club, Freetown Memorial Post VFW, the alcohol restaurant, South, Southern, South Coast Food LLC, Independence Harbor Incorporated, The Nephews, Italian Murrican Kitchen Incorporated, The Wine and Marte Package Store, Grandpa's Place Incorporated, Basin Road Food Mart Corporation, Entertainment License for the Independence Harbor, The Nephews, Italian Murrican Kitchen Incorporated, Freetown Memorial Post 6643 VFW, the jukebox license for the Assonet Inn, the Freetown Memorial Post 6643 VFW, the automatic amusement device, the license license for Assonet Inn Incorporated, the Freetown Memorial Post 6643 VFW, and the South Coast Foods LLC, and the sale of secondhand furniture and merchandise, My Friends Place Two. That's my, that's the motion to adopt.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is discussed contract with the town of Lakeville relative to Freetown's Animal Shelter. We've already done that, so we're good to go. Approved minutes from October 22nd, I think we should hold that for the next meeting since I was not at that meeting and we can't get that. Update from the town administrator regarding the department head meeting and development of the budget timeline.
Yeah, we met last week. Basically, the purpose was to get everybody together, went over routine matters, followed up on various projects, one of which was making sure that tax bills are going to be out on time. But we did have discussion about the upcoming budget process and it was based on a meeting we had the previous evening concerning school funding. It was also based upon my understanding of cutbacks in state revenue in the upcoming budget year and indicated that we were still in a hold line fiscal environment, that we weren't looking to expand programs. We had some increases that were required under contract that we had to account for those, but other than that, we're not looking at any new spending. After that meeting, I developed a budget timeline to get the process started and found out that I already have a mistake in that.
Boo boo.
I'm just trying to get it done earlier.
I know. The only, for those that may have received this, Richard had May 6th, 2013 as our town meeting, but our first meeting, our annual town meeting is the first Monday in June.
I think it's June 3rd or something.
Yeah, it just gives us a little extra time and Lakeville has their meeting at the same time, so. We really haven't had a lot of talk, did you want, do you have anything else?
No, I mean, we have the budget sheets ready to go out.
We may have.
Well, we also have to have a meeting with Janice because we're going to do the accounts slightly differently this year and we need her to update people on what's going on.
Okay. We really haven't had a lot of time to talk about how we want to see, how the board wants to see, how the budget's going to come in and maybe now, now's a good time to talk about, you know, level funding versus level services versus this versus that and everybody have a clear idea. I just think that every, last year, we asked everybody to do level funding and I have to say, no one came back with level funding. They came back with what they wanted as a budget. So, if this year, we could make it a little bit different, start off with level funding and then another line item for salary, voted and approved salary increases, those that are already contractual, not those that somebody may want to have. And then the third line item, maybe new, new requests, like what, is it, is it, you need, you know, I don't know, new paper, new supplies, new, different than what you've already got in your level funded budget? What do you think?
I, well, first of all, like I want to talk, I want to, we're going to start off with, the confusing part to me is, we start off with a budget that we approved at town meeting. Now, there has been some additions to those budgets. Specifically, we voted at the town meeting last week to fund the contractual, the new contracts.
Right.
Now, to me, that becomes part of.
Absolutely.
It does, okay. And then what you're saying is that the additional part, when you said salaries, you mean, you want to break out salary costs from other expenditures and that's how we want to track it in the accounting system too, right? I agree with that a hundred percent.
Yeah, and it's easier for us to do that because we put in salaries and then we account for fringes in another budget. So, whatever increases might accrue as a result of health insurance increases and other, don't have to be built back into the budget. We've also been tracking terminal payments for employee retirements outside of the budget. So, we ought to be able to basically look at, and all of our budgets, for the most part, are level service and level funded. There is a little bit of confusion, at least last year, and I came in when this was halfway done, because folks were not understanding level service or level funding, but contractually required expenses.
Right. So, if that could be like the other line, you know what I mean? And there are some things that we voted on at, at the special town meeting that aren't, shouldn't be part of the budget.
Absolutely.
It's just a one time thing. So, I think that before we even go to that level, that, you know, whether we have a working meeting one night, just the board and you and.
Yeah, we should.
So, we all have, so, yeah, so we all have exactly where we're all going to start off from. So, we're not, everybody's got a different number. We'll all start off with the same number and then you'll, you'll have that to compare when the budgets come in from each department. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's great. The one thing I do add is that, since we kind of live by the calendar, and it's a great thing that, that.
As long as you do not do it on my birthday, sorry Brad, I will not be able to attend.
Your birthday, is your birthday, let me guess, is it the 14th?
It is. And why don't you try to guess what day I was born on?
Thursday.
Uh-uh.
Sunday.
Uh-uh.
Monday.
The inevitable Friday, the 13th.
Were you really?
Yes, I was. Explains a whole heck of a lot, doesn't it?
I just, I asked Elsie today when I was talking to put those dates on the calendar so we, so we know how to run our personal life.
Yeah, right. Yeah, if you could just send out like what you think the budget worksheet should look like and then we can like all.
Okay.
Put our two cents in and then, and then we'll be able to go, so.
All right. Well, we can now have another, another month built into this calendar that we didn't originally. That's old school. So, we, so we don't want to take advantage of all of that, but.
Right. But I think that if we can get those worksheets done and everybody's agreeable to the worksheets and I think it makes it so much cleaner, like it's not convoluted, it's not just a bottom line that says what, what everything is needed for. The other thing with the budget is there should be a review of the equipment needs, like, you know, we're, we're at that, almost at that point where we have to update our five year plan and also with our capital improvement needs, building stuff. That has to be done. Paul usually does that, but I think that you're going to have to pull in some people to get that done.
Right, and I've gotten some information from departments as well as Janice on where we are with the equipment that we've already purchased because of the way we financed it and because of the prices, we didn't use all of the funds in this year and consequently we'll use it in following years that we thought, so we'll be able to update all of that.
Okay, perfect. I'm good. Do you want a, a motion on that or we don't know?
I know.
Okay.
I understand it.
All right, good. I'm happy now. I know, Brad. All right. All right, so, request from, oh, as part of that budget stuff, I know that it says here spring warrant, but also like just make sure, it's new on our agenda for those people that are not, didn't see our agenda. We just want to make sure that we're not losing track of things that we need for the annual town meeting and we want that reflected in the agenda, so I just want everybody to know that.
You know, a spring town meeting for the whole business?
No, it should be annual.
It should be annual?
Annual town meeting.
Oh, annual, okay.
Okay. All right, request from Mason Road Food Mart Court, DBA Prime Express to have a change of manager, must obtain local licensing authority approval first as required by the ABCC. I'm so confused with this. Did this manager have training, this new manager have training and everything? You know, I know he's got like a, and this manager's going to come from New Jersey?
New Jersey.
Is he on site, is he going to be on site, whatever, it's hours?
Of course.
Yeah, it's right up at the top. See? 27 Franklin Park, New Jersey. Is he on site, is he going to be on site, whatever, it's hours? I'm trying to find it.
Hold on, request of new manager, this person here. He lives in Southeastern. That's what it says here, request of new manager.
Chima?
Yeah, Chima.
Right, but his name here says.
Yeah, but this is the form that he filled out, see, he has personal.
Yeah, I know, but are we sure? Cause his resume that he submitted with his paperwork says still New Jersey.
Yeah.
And has he been trained? And did he, you know, like we, I know that everybody that we have managing usually takes a training on the alcohol license procedure and what to do and how to do it and.
Well, maybe we should get that information from him. Get in contact with him.
Yeah, I, I. There's a lot of questions. I mean, we ask this of every manager that comes in, right Elsie? I mean, we asked this of Laura Roy when she came in, did she have a training, da-da-da-da? Is he going to be on site, whatever, it's hours?
It's on here, it says on manager application, under two, number of hours per week you'll spend.
Which?
You put in 40 to 60.
Which one are you looking at?
Um, one, two, three, four, they're still in order. The fifth page at the top, it says manager application. Under number two.
Forty to sixty hours. He's a citizen, he has his passport, show that.
Yep.
And it's personal information on the form, shows that he lives in Southeastern. These forms are the state forms, aren't they?
Yes, this is what's required from the ABCC, everything and funny was what the ABCC requires, not the town.
I don't see any reference to special courses.
No, it says he has no experience. If you look under four, background information.
He's ever been convicted of a state. The same page, he's the, oh, the application.
Have you ever been a manager, record that is, oh.
Yeah, it says suspended, revoked or canceled.
Yeah, yeah, those are just, well, that he's in trouble. But then you go on to the personal information, where he claims he's, where he's from and so forth. There's no reference on these state farms whether they've taken a, where he has taken any courses or what, or what courses are required by the state.
And so, the state license issued in New Jersey, no, no. His quarry, his New Jersey.
Why are we so concerned?
Hold. What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, we should find out, well, I guess we should find out if state requires him to take any specific courses first.
Right, and.
And secondly, is he a resident? If he is, he ought to get his license changed.
Yep.
If he lives in Southeastern. Yeah, but he still has a.
He's got thirty days.
Yeah, he's got thirty days.
See his quarry request form, Elsie?
I'm sorry?
It's on his quarry request form, state license issued is New Jersey.
What do we need to find out though, because you have to respond by time you manage the ABCC when we have it in our office. So, I need to know what the board wants, what is missing, what do you want? Because the ABCC requirements they've given us, what the ABCC.
Okay, can he prove he's a Massachusetts resident, residents, because his, his. Residents, because his, his, um, resume says he lives in New Jersey, and his license says he's from New Jersey. So, if, if he's from Mass, he's got to be able to prove that he's from Massachusetts. And if he's not from Massachusetts and he's from New Jersey, it's going to be hard for us to prove that he's going to spend forty to sixty hours a week at Prime Express. Is that it? No, not tonight, though. I don't know.
No, you wanted to also know whether there's any, uh, alcohol handling courses that are required.
Right.
That the state requires, that they. So, I mean, there's no question, it's inconsistent, it's in pages. So, I guess we'll.
Hold for the next meeting. All right. Uh, legislation for the Tyler J. Trayhan Roundabout. Um, I'm going to turn this over to Paul.
An act designating a certain roundabout in the town of Freetown as the Navy Petty Officer Second Class Tyler J. Trayhan Memorial Roundabout. I believe the governor signed this today. Whereas, the deferred operation of this act would tend to defeat its purpose, which is to designate forthwith the roundabout located at the intersection of County Chase and Mason Roads in the town of Freetown as the Navy Petty Officer Second Class Tyler J. Trayhan Memorial Roundabout. Therefore, it is hereby declared to be an, an emergency law necessary for the immediate preservation of the public convenience, be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and the General Court Assembly, and by the authority of the same as follows. The roundabout located at the intersection of County Chase and Mason Roads in the town of Freetown shall be designated and known as the Navy Petty Officer Second Class Tyler J. Trayhan Memorial Roundabout. The Massachusetts Department Transportation so, uh, shall erect and maintain suitable markets bearing the designation in compliance with the standards of the department. That happened, that it was signed by the governor today. That is a wonderful thing.
Yes, and, um, I know that there is planning, uh, ceremony planning taking place, we don't have any information on that yet, but I know that the training has been working with, um, the Navy, so when we have more details, we'll be really sure to, to let everybody know.
And I've been in touch with them probably about a month and a half ago, Mrs. Trayhan. Uh, she did tell me that she's in touch with, uh, Tyler's former commanding officer in the Navy, they want to be a part of the ceremony. Uh, basically, the plan is to let them plan the ceremony, they will let us know, uh, when it's going to be, and we'll show up and participate.
Yeah, and one thing, I just want to make sure that everybody knows, this is the Tyler Trayhan Roundabout, um, but it's really located in Veterans Square or Circle?
Square.
Square, that's what I thought, okay. And, you know, it's, um, I don't want anybody to feel slighted in any way, so, um, it's the Tyler Trayhan Roundabout located in Veterans Square.
Can continue to keep in touch.
Okay, sure.
Because he signed it, uh, today, uh, but are there plans, the article on the paper said there was plans for the spring, are there plans to do that in the springtime? And because the state has signed that, is Mastio Team going to put a sign up now? Or are they going to wait until?
I would hope that they would, that we would wait until we have, you know, the unveiling of the sign and everything, yeah. I, I would hope that that's the way it was going to go down.
I, I think the comment about the spring was based upon knowing that we wouldn't be able to assemble the folks that want to be here.
That's what I'm saying, they won't be here, they won't come up here in a lot of time.
No.
It's difficult.
No.
Because they, the Navy band, that same Navy band goes to, uh, Operation Tiger in Bethany in April. Now, that's around, geez, thirteen, or middle of April sometime. So, it might be, so the day, your timeframe might be, you're going to be in Bethany, you're going to be in Freetown the next day or something.
There, there are too many moving parts for me to speculate.
Yeah, we'll let the Navy handle it.
And, and I definitely.
They're good logistics, yeah. I say, I know they come in for that, they've gone to the last few years. I'm hoping they're in the springtime.
Yeah.
The state doesn't put anything there until they're ready.
Yeah, let's find out the answer to that question, because.
I, I was at a, a serpent meeting the other night, we were talking about, uh, the, uh, the new roundabout video, in which, uh, Dan plays a starring role, and, um, there was no discussion about signage or anything other than getting it stabilized, waiting for the dedication.
Right. Thank you. Change of status forms for Town Hall, Council on Aging, Highway, Transfer Station, Fire Department, and Police Department.
I think you can just move to approve all that are contained here.
Really?
I make a motion to approve all the changes status forms. These status forms reflect the action by the, uh, Special Town Meeting, where we funded the, uh, new contracts, uh, for police, fire, highway, uh, department, which includes Town Hall, uh, and, uh, libraries, Council on Aging. So, uh, those were approved by the voters at the Special Town Meeting, and this is just the actual document that we have to have so that the payments can be made. Uh, the employees will receive retroactive pay at the end of December for, from July first through the end of December, and then, then they'll be paid on a regular basis, their, their, our rate will be adjusted at that point. So, that is my motion.
Um, I will second it, just, um, one added thing, has the town accountant or the Treasuries Department, um, looked over the rates to ensure that each one is correct?
And then, yes, and they'll look over them again.
Okay. Then, um, knowing that they have been looked over, and, um, also, uh, will be looked over again, I will second that motion. All those in favor? And if Jackie needs us to do this individually, she'll let us know.
You have to sign them all.
You have to sign them.
I, I know, it's going to take me a little while. All right, discuss possible retention of a town planner. Thinking that's too early? Or do you want to start talking about it? Go ahead.
Well, I, I, first of all, we, we have a open vacancy for a individual position to work for the planning board. And is it the Board of Appeals also, that individual, or just planning?
Planning.
Just planning board. So, we got that pending.
Right.
Uh, as far as talking about a town planner, it probably, I, my opinion is, I think we should probably wait and see who we hire and what experience they, they have. That's, that's my view right now. Nothing that says we can't talk about it, but.
No, I, I agree. I mean, let's see, you know, who we hire and where we're going with it, but I think that, um, it's something that we should look at. And, and I don't necessarily have to call it, that person is a town planner, but, um, somebody that's going to look into economic development for us and, and work with the, um, planning board and Conservation Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals to, um, actually lay out a game plan for where we're going, where, where this town's going, you know, with open space and, and, um, you know, business development and things like that, and maybe market this town, uh, a little bit better, so we can get some business in here. But, yeah, let's, let's see where we are and maybe come back, um, you know, in January and, and talk about this as we get closer to town meeting.
What's our anticipated, uh, hiring schedule?
It's going.